Well, good morning. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioner meeting. I want to extend a welcome to those that are joining us online via Facebook and YouTube with our television partner, KPTS, and also those that are here in person behind us today. Also, I want to make note that there is construction going on downstairs here at the Ruffin Building, so we've had to move our meeting to the sixth floor today. So, a little out of sorts, but business will get conducted as usual. We want to appreciate everybody's flexibility in being able to come up here and squeeze into this room today. We've got a tight meeting, a good meeting, with a wonderful organization here joining us today. I'm excited to share a proclamation with, but that being said, why don't we go ahead and get to work and call this meeting to order for October 16th, 2024? Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
My pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. As many of you are aware, we are deep in election season, and we have 20 days left till the big fun arrives. So, I have Laura Rainwater here. She's the Election Commissioner. She's talked about advanced in-person voting and also just some important dates.
Yes, our Election Commissioner, Laura Rainwater, welcome.
Well, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners and County staff. Thanks for having me here today. Yes, 20 days from today is Election Day. Registration closed yesterday. We will continue processing applications received either online or postmarked by 11:59 last night. As of this morning, we have processed over 4,500 just in the last week alone. Mail ballots will be sent out today. So far, we have processed approximately 23,000 requests for mail ballots. This is about a third of the number of mail ballots we received in 2016. That was, that number was about 60,000 in 2016. We really can't compare to 2020 when we received 87,000 mail ballots during COVID. We will continue to fulfill mail ballot requests through the deadline. The deadline to request a mail ballot is October 29th. Because of the low number of mail ballot requests this year, I want to encourage anybody to vote early because we are anticipating a large number of people for in-person voting. To make voting early more accessible to Sedgwick County voters, for the first time, we are opening two satellite locations the same day we open voting at the election office. Beginning Monday, October 21st, not only will voters be able to vote at the election office during regular business hours, but they can go to Reformation Lutheran Church on East 13th or to the Sedgwick County Extension Office at 21st and Ridge Road. The hours for those two locations will be 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and the two Saturdays that encompass that two-week span, they will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The other 17 satellite locations will open on Tuesday, October 29th. They will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Tuesday through Friday, and then that Saturday before Election Day, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Early voting will be available at the election office until noon on Monday, November 4th. If you don't vote early, just know that you may be standing in long lines on Election Day. Election Day sites will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have added 25 new polling sites this year in an effort to reduce the number of registered voters at each site, which we hope will reduce the long lines, but seeing the low number of mail ballot applications that have come in, I still anticipate long lines on Election Day. One-third of all voters in Sedgwick County were reassigned a new polling site this year. So, everybody that was affected by a new polling site assignment did receive new voter ID cards, but you can check your assigned Election Day polling site and also view your sample ballot on the Secretary of State's website, votks.gov, and then just click on the voter view icon. There are many races on the ballot this year. My ballot alone has 39 races. It's a very large ballot, so I want to encourage all the voters out there to check out their ballot prior to going to the polls so they are prepared to make their choices. This past Friday, we mailed out a postcard to every household in Sedgwick County, and on that postcard, all the early voting locations with their hours of operation were included. There was a QR code that people could scan to get a mail ballot application, and it also provided the Election Day polling site for that household. Lastly, we've been very busy recruiting and training over 900 election workers. These people are the true heroes of our election. They are our friends and our neighbors, and they are working a very long day for minimal pay. Most aren't doing it for the money, but out of civil service to our country, so please be kind and patient and show them some grace during what is going to be a very busy and stressful day. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Laura, thank you. And Commissioners, since we don't have our buttons that we flick on the lights, if you want any questions or comments, just flag me down. We'll make sure we get you honored. Any questions or comments for Laura? Thank you for the efforts particularly in increasing the number of sites, polling sites. You said there were 25 more sites coming. How many total polling, Election Day polling sites are there now?
There's 107.
107.
This time last year for the general election, we had 82.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, good work, Laura. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's all I have today for county announcements. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Nicole? Very good, thank you. Appreciate you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, we had some individuals sign up for public comment. What will happen today is when I call your name, you're just welcome to come up here to the podium. You'll have five minutes. Our friendly County Clerk will keep a timer and let you know when your time is about to expire and will expire. When you come to the podium, if you can give your name and address for the public record, that would be helpful. First up, James, forgive me, my friend, Kristolich.
That's okay. It's close. That's close. Wow. Thank you, everybody. My name is James Kristolich from Ideatech. My address is currently 2627 North Parkwood Lane here in Wichita, Kansas, but I'm here today to talk about BEAD program. I know I've worked with some of you all in the past on some grant applications, and I'm here today to talk to you about the BEAD program. You may say, James, what is BEAD? It's always got an acronym, but it's Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. There's about $450 million that is coming to the state of Kansas for these broadband initiatives. I think everybody understands how important it is to have good access to broadband, especially having a fiber optic within the county. And so, the state has come up with this map that you can see in front of you of these specific homes that they will pay to help cover some of these areas. And so, there's about 193 homes without here within the county, Sedgwick County, that we were proposing to build out. And as you know, we've, an Ideatech, we're founded in Beeler, Kansas, a small town, 1,300 folks. 2007, we were one of the first cities to ever have a full fiber optic connection. Still, to this day, it's still better than some areas we're here within Wichita. And so, our mission is to serve the underserved, and so, we participate in these grants, and we understand what it means to be rural. And so, when we look at these things here, we've built out private investments in Mays, Coldwich, those things, Valley Center, south down to Hayesville, things like that. But these, this application, these are the hardest homes that cannot make a business case without this funding. And so, today, I'm here to ask for a letter of support from you all to go towards this application. We know that when we work together with partnerships with the county commissioners, things go well. Then also, just to talk about maybe even any type of matching contribution that you would put towards this. I can tell you that when we look at applications, when we have a letter of support, and when a county comes together, I've worked with a lot of different county commissioners throughout the state, when you have that little bit of support, it goes a long way within the grading rubric. So, here to answer any questions that you see today, I know in this form here, you see that there's 193 premises, total adjacent, 932 homes. Those 932 homes, we're going to build privately with our own dollars. That is not coming out of the BEAD funding, and so, we're really looking to build out 1,100 homes here within the county and would love some support from you all.
Okay, very good, James. Commissioners, any questions or comments for James? Okay, seeing none. Justin, question. How do we best go about, there's, he made a formal request for a support letter from the Commissioner. Are these conversations that happen, should we ask him to reach out directly to our office to have a discussion, or how do you want to?
I would probably suggest, and I defer some to Tom, it might be good to run through the manager's office on that. I know we have, if there's an interest in a proclamation, we have a proclamation policy we'd have to look at, make sure that it's in line with that.
Okay, very good. James, if you could, just make sure you get manager's office contact information and.
Okay.
And reach out directly. Commissioner Meitzner.
James, thanks for your efforts on this. I'm just looking at the map. Is McConnell Air Force Base, do they not have high-speed internet?
Oh, no, they do. McConnell has like a private connection. You kind of look at here in this map here, you see some of these green little dots. I really blew them up so they look a lot bigger than they probably are from a home side, but those are the 193 premises. They're spread out, nothing really in the city limits because that's considered covered, but we're talking the hardest-to-serve homes.
Okay, all right. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, James, very much appreciate the work you guys are doing. Any other questions or comments for James? Okay, seeing none, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Only one person signing up today for public comment, so I will make a motion to receive and file public comment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, all Commissioners were present for this meeting on October 2nd. Any questions or comments or any revisions you'd like to see in the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamation, item B, proclamation declaring Family Promise Week.
A wonderful proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas Family Promise of Greater Wichita is dedicated to helping homeless and low-income families achieve sustainable independence through a community-based response. And whereas, Family Promise Week celebrates the collective efforts of our community to support families in crisis, raising awareness and rallying support for those experiencing homelessness. And whereas, Family Promise of Greater Wichita has mobilized volunteers, local congregations, and community organizations to provide temporary housing, mills, and comprehensive services to families in need. And whereas, Family Promise Week highlights the importance of providing a stable environment for children and their families, ensuring that every child has the opportunity to thrive in a secure home. And whereas, community involvement and volunteerism are critical to the success of Family Promise's mission, demonstrating the power of collaboration and compassion in addressing family homelessness. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize October 21st through the 25th, 2024, as Family Promise Week. We recognize this in Sedgwick County, and we encourage all citizens to support Family Promise of Greater Wichita through volunteering, donations, and advocacy to ensure that every family has a home, a livelihood, and the chance to build a better future. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve as read.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is my friend, Don Ebb, the Executive Director of Family Promise of Greater Wichita. Good morning, Don, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty and the Commissioners, for helping us recognize and celebrate Family Promise Week. We work hard every day to make sure every child in our community has a home, and we are so grateful for our government, our city and county government, to help us do this. So, please follow us on Facebook and find out how you can help and learn more about it. Our goal next week is to build awareness about the issue of family homelessness and how it is growing in a hidden sector of the homeless population. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much, Don, and have some questions and comments from the Commission, but can you tell us, what is the number of people that you serve maybe annually at Family Promise?
Yeah, we serve, oh, gosh, as far as families goes, probably about 300 families in our different services. So, either shelter, homeless prevention is where we're really serving about 20 families a month, keeping them in their home.
Yeah, the, some of the things that we're seeing in the community, obviously the city of Wichita and their MAC project and other discussions around the deficit of shelter beds, the class of individuals many times that are at the deficit and feel the deficit worse are those particularly women and children. And I know that your organization and many of your folks are here today to help celebrate this proclamation, that you focus on these individuals and you provide that stability, particularly with children. And I must say too, also, many times, women in particular with children are hesitant to come forward and ask for help because they don't want to alert maybe DCF or create any issues to where their children might be, about potential of being removed from their, for their custody. So, you guys created an environment that is stable, it's safe, and resourceful, and for that, I'm eternally grateful for the work that Family Promise does. We appreciate you deeply.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission? We'd like to get a picture, if that's okay. A little weird in the space today, but maybe if the team want to come up here, we'll grab a picture. Give us two minutes and we'll knock this out. Okay, a wonderful proclamation for a wonderful organization. Very glad to do that today. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item C, consideration of application for Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant JAG Program fiscal year 2024 through U.S. Department of Justice for $386,837.
Okay, good morning, Eli.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Eli Cormanek. I am an intern here with the County Manager's Office at Sedgwick County. I'm going to present the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG. The JAG grant is a primary provider of resources for law enforcement, Department of Justice work at the state and local levels. So, here's kind of an overview of the funding we received this year. The total funding for 2024 is $386,837. Sedgwick County share is 50% or $196,418.50. Sedgwick County amount is a decrease of $51,135.50 or 22.18% compared to the funding received in 2023. The 2024 enacted budget represents the largest cut to base resources that the Department of Justice has faced in the last 10 years. Currently, the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County are classified as disparate jurisdictions. This means that they receive funding in one lump sum. The sum can be divided up through an agreement between the city and county. Today, in addition to staff recommendation to accept the grant, we also ask that you conduct a public hearing to accept public comments as required by the grant and the United States Department of Justice. This slide outlines the requests and recommendations for the separate departments that are covered under this grant. The, what we have is an advisory board that recommended the dollars and a percent. The advisory board included representatives from each of the departments listed, as well as Commissioner Howell, Mike Elpers, the Chief Information Officer, and Rusty Leeds, the Assistant County Manager. The total funding requested for 2024 was $250,474.89. The committee met to discuss requests and determine a recommended amount of $193,418.50 based on the grant allocation. For reference, the requests in 2023 totaled $275,339.61. Any questions?
Okay, very good, Eli.
I, more, but for this slide, I guess. Sorry.
Go for it.
Okay, we'll continue. For 2024, the recommended islands were ranked by priority. The committee worked together to determine which priorities were funded for each department. The following information will cover specific items funded through the grant. So, for the Sheriff's Office, here's a little bit of the items we have. On this slide, you'll see the quest for total numbers of units for kind of the things on the list, the total cost per unit, and then indirect cost, which under this grant, certain things, administrative costs, things of that nature qualify for indirect costs. The Sheriff's Office had seven requests this year. It will utilize JAG funds to purchase supplies, equipment to reduce crime and improve public safety. The Patrol Division is committed to providing professional expert assistance in motor vehicle collisions that involve life-threatening or fatal injury. In order to accurately document complex collision scenes, accidents, investigators utilize precision survey equipment. The purchase of GNSS RTK solution will increase efficiencies and bring the Sheriff's Office in line with other law enforcement agencies who employ an advanced collision investigative team. SWC, should I go over all of these?
No, I think we've seen it in the support materials.
Okay, okay. Sorry. No worries. So, there's the Sheriff's Office. Here's the Regional Forensic Science Center, kind of a similar deal, I guess. I'll just go through them, and if you have questions about a specific item, I have data on that. Sorry for the confusion.
No, you're good, bud.
So, yeah, autopsy cart, digital camera, things of that nature. So, they had $39,340. Next on the list is, oh, the District Attorney's Office, also $39,034.38, seven requests, some forensic software, an iPad, a new laptop technology, just things to help things run more smoothly in the department. Corrections had two requests for a total of $45,000. Funds will be utilized to pay licensing fees for body cameras and housing assistance for Corrections clients. The courthouse police also two requests for a total of $10,883 for TASER cartridges and battery packs and cameras for the West Side parking garage. Okay, so, that is the overview of the requests and priorities for the JAG 2024 funding grant. At this time, it's a staff recommendation that you open a public hearing, accept public comments, and then close the public hearing. After the public hearing, it is recommended that you approve the submission of the grant application, acceptance of the grant if awarded, authorize the chairman or designate the grant administrator and revenue manager to sign all necessary documents, including both a grant agreement containing substantially the same terms and conditions as the application and sub-recipient agreement to be executed with the city of Wichita, authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allowing for the remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. With that, I'll stand for questions.
There you go. There's a lot on that item.
Yeah.
As mentioned, as recommended by the Department of Justice, we will open up a public hearing and receive public comment. Before we get into the public hearing piece of it and we open that up, Commissioners, do you have any specific questions for Eli or Tom or Rusty in any of these issues? Commissioner Howell also served on that, so it might be a good reference on some of these things as well. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yep, thank you. Is there, your first slide was split between city and county?
Yes.
But all, all the information here is, is all county-related, so the city has half?
Yep.
Half that number, and then they divided them?
Yeah, so the city is in charge of their own management. I know that the Budget Office has worked with them on the details of that, but we receive kind of the whole lump sum from the federal government, and we send it straight on to them. They're in charge of managing the details on that.
And remind me, from the past, if it's, if we don't get the full amount, then I guess priority fives go away? Is that what happens?
So, to my understanding, is the 25, $250,000 amount was kind of the amount requested, and the number we have now that 198 is the number that we've been given by the Department of Justice. If that's wrong, somebody can correct me, but that was my understanding.
That's, we fit it into what they give us.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Howell.
I don't have any questions. I just think that, I don't know if we ever should add a paragraph to this, kind of just talk about who this person was and why does this, why does this program exist? Every year this comes up, I just want to reflect on history just for just a moment. This was a 20-year-old officer for a New York Police Department. He was born in 1966, 1986, he joined the force. Two years later, he was murdered. He was sitting in his car, it was a, it was a, it was a hit job by a, by a drug boss who was in, who was in jail, who ordered the hit, and it was all about drugs. And so, the Department of Justice established this fund back in 2005 to memorialize essentially the police officers that gave their lives on this topic. And this is not the only type of murder that's ever happened that relates to drugs and gangs and police officers that lose their lives over, over this type of just unnecessary, incredible violence against, against our law enforcement officers. So, I just think that the, the history of this is a little bit important. If you want to read more about Edward Byrne, please do that. I think that to memorialize him was very appropriate, and I'm glad our government took the initiative to memorialize him back in 2005. So, by my calculations, this is roughly the 19th year roughly, I may be off by one year, that we received funds from this, from this fund. And here in Sedgwick County, Wichita, we've always split this 50/50, I believe, and just think about all the things in Sedgwick County that have, that have been benefited from this fund over the years, again, in memorial of this officer that gave his life. I just think it's, I wish it was a paragraph added to the backup material to kind of explain the history of this and why does this exist? Anyway, I wanted to bring all that up because I think the history is important. And with that, I don't have any questions. I'll just say, when I did come to the meeting, it was well-attended. Everyone had a plan, and everyone gave up some of their, some of their desires very quickly to get under the threshold that was expected to be awarded to Sedgwick County. So, everyone worked together, there was no conflict, everyone, I think, had, came into that, ended that meeting with priorities, and they were able to adjust their, their wishes to fit under the threshold that was expected to be coming to Sedgwick County. So, it was a great meeting, literally lasted 10 minutes, and I think, again, we certainly do benefit from this, and I have no questions, glad to support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful background on the basis of what this grant is. Also notice just what these funds will do for, see the Forensic Science Center, the District Attorney, Corrections, courthouse police, and these funds will get put to use, and will serve this community very, very well, so. Okay, why don't we officially open the public hearing and invite public comment? Would anybody from the public like to share on this specific item, the consideration of application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant? Anyone from the public would like to share? We are open to comment. A second call, anyone from the public, would you like to share on the JAG grant application? Okay, seeing none, I'll officially close the public hearing, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioners, before I make a motion, would anybody like any final comments or questions on this specific item? Okay, seeing none, I move to submit this grant application, and I adopt and incorporate the second sentence of the recommended action for this agenda item into my motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you very much. Wonderful, wonderful grant that's going to get put to use. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Main Courthouse Annex Remodel Capital Improvement Program, CIP Amendment.
Hey, it's Andrew Dilts.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Dilts here to present CIP amendment for the Main Courthouse Annex remodel. The current Main Courthouse remodel funded by ARPA is winding down and will be complete by the end of the year. The remodel expands courts, sheriff judicial, and district attorney's areas, allowing cases to work through the system at a quicker pace. It also moves the DA's office out of the Main Courthouse Annex and into the Main Courthouse, leaving the annex vacant. This allows the county to move the sheriff ORU into the annex as their lease at the Harry Street Mall expires at the end of this year. Other programs that have been absorbed into county facilities will follow and eventually move into the annex as well. These programs consist of pre-trial services currently located at Adult Field Services, and Drug Court, and Veterans Treatment Court, both programs located at Adult Residential The CIP amendment to remodel the The CIP amendment to remodel the annex has been broken into two phases, allowing us to immediately begin on Phase One if approved today. Phase One allows us to remodel the first floor of the annex, because we do not have sufficient time to remodel the, to have the remodel complete by the end of the year, we will temporarily move Sheriff ORU to the second floor of the annex while the first floor is under construction. Upon completion, we will move ORU to the first floor. Following the Sheriff ORU move to the first floor, Phase Two will begin with construction occurring on the second floor for pre-trial services, Drug Court, and Veterans Treatment Court. Our total for the remodel, which includes a new entrance constructed outside of the annex, is just shy of $3 million phased over two years. The project will be funded with an interfund transfer of general fund cash to the CIP fund. Financing facilities will coordinate to seek opportunities from affiliated department grants for reimbursement, I'm sorry, for reimbursement if eligible and available. Here is a concept drawing of the first floor on the left and the first, and the second floor on the right, to give an idea of what this potential layout could look like for all the, the programs moving into the annex. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, we've been briefed and had some discussions on this amendment, the CIP amendment. Do you have any other questions or comments for Andrew? Okay, Andrew, I would just publicly say that I know that when we lost the lease at Harry Street Mall, removing all these different departments and, and programming and everything, I know it's been scramble mode for many of you in your department and, uh, for Tanya and for a lot of people, um, and, uh, so we just appreciate the work. I know there's a lot of moving pieces, and, uh, we appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this. Let's try to get us into some streamlined programming.
And I can't speak for all the departments that are affected by this too, and how willing they've been to, to work with us and find a solution.
Indeed, indeed. Okay, very good. Well, I will move to, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the CIP and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you again, Andrew. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on October 10, 2024.
Here he is, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, purchasing director for the record. Uh, the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on October 10th has two items that we're recommending for your approval. First item is radios for the Department of Corrections, and this, pardon me, recommendation is to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $267,460.92. And our final item is software as a service for Project Docs Upgrade, and that's for the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Evolve Software Corporation, and it's in the amount of $65,352. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Two items today on bid board. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bidding Contracts for October 10, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks again, Joe. Appreciate your work. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of, uh, consent items F through P with the exception of I this morning. I'd like to take that separately and have a more public presentation on that.
Agreed. Okay, we're going to pull I and have a discussion. Uh, Commissioners, any questions on any other consent items F through P? Seeing none, I move to approve the consent agenda, items F through P with the exception of item I.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Back to item I, Tom.
Uh, Chairman, Joan Tammany, the Director of, uh, Calm Care, is here this morning. This is a, for the public, this is a consideration of addition of 21 positions to the Calm Care staffing table. Uh, it, it's a big enough item, and there's a long story and a short story to this, so I wanted Joan to just kind of take a minute publicly, kind of talk about the need for these positions and just where we're at in Calm Care and the amount of services being requested, so. Joan, I will turn it over to you.
Joan, thanks for being here this morning. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Joan Tammany, Executive Director of Calm Care, your Community Behavioral Health Clinic and Community Mental Health Center, um, and actually, Tom told me I can have 10, 15 minutes, so I'm going to use some of it to give a little longer than a short story. Um, and, and I agree, I mean, this is worthy of, um, some public education around the ASK, um, and it's just really important, um, for, for me to go through and talk about the rationale for each of the positions in the ASK, um, and then also to talk about the drivers for the ASK, and then also to talk about, we don't talk enough or celebrate enough some of our successes as a CCBHC, so I wanted to take the opportunity to do that. So the two external drivers motivating the ASK, um, today, and forgive me, I have had allergies like crazy, so I do have cough drops if I need them, but the two drivers are, include the evolution of 988 and scaling up our CCBHC. I want to talk about 988 first. Calm Care became a 988 Lifeline Center in 2022 on July 16th, so we've celebrated two years. Um, and since that time, the awareness of the three-digit number has expanded and utilization continues to, um, be maximized, well, not maximized, but increased. Um, the state success is pretty remarkable. Uh, we're hitting the 85% national target for answering calls locally within Kansas before it transfers to the National Lifeline Center. But with that evolution, we are moving to adding chat and text as a statewide option. And many of you know that chat and text is a preferred method of communication for many youth and young adults. They're very comfortable on technology, so this will provide that opportunity, um, to expand access to crisis services for these individuals. We're hopeful to be live with chat and text by the end of the year here in Sedgwick County. Um, I think I've shared with you before, unlike 988 calls that come in, they're routed to the closest, um, Lifeline Center. With chat and text, they go into a statewide queue and are distributed to the centers that are taking chat and text. Um, and will, will be one of those four centers. So a big milestone. This is a huge revelation in, in 988. It's been a vision for those of us that have worked in the field for a really long time. So this particular ASK includes the addition of four full-time and one part-time integrated care specialists who will not only take calls, but will answer chat and text through our 988 Lifeline Center for those who choose to use that alternative. In addition, we're asking for two additional, uh, team supervisors at Crisis. We've had significant growth there over the last couple of years since we became a certified community behavioral health clinic and a 988 Lifeline Center, and the work is difficult and complex, and we need supervisors who are available to debrief and train and support and promote balance for that workforce, so we're including two supervisors to. Um, right now, the, the, the number of staff supervisors have under them is, is, is quite unwieldy. I mean, some of them have up to 33 direct reports, and when you're doing this type of work, that doesn't give you the sense of, um, feeling heard or the opportunity to train or learn or grow, um, that you would want as an employee. So that's the first driver. The second driver is we became a community behavioral health clinic, a certified community behavioral health clinic, which I'll refer to as CCBHC going forward this morning, um, in 2022, and then subsequently became fully certified at the beginning of 2024. That came at, um, uh, it was a hefty lift. Um, we had to, um, start meeting national standards around the types of services we deliver as well as clinical and quality measures related to the work that we do as a CCBHC. The second driver, uh, the second driver is important because, um, all but two of the remaining positions we're asking for on this list are tied to children's services where we have seen significant growth. Um, I think all of you know that since COVID, youth mental, emotional well-being has kind of been forefront and visible in the news, in the paper, TV, me, social media, in the schools. I mean, you name it, it is, it is a challenge, and we don't even know what the ongoing need is going to be in our community. I mean, we're, we're just starting, you know, we're still dealing with the initial wave of explosion of kids who are actually comfortable asking and seeking help. Um, but we're asking for eight integrated care specialists. Again, these are our field-based staff who help our clients manage their emotional well-being and learn how to navigate their day in more successful ways by managing their symptoms, by learning new life skills, um, by assisting them in environments where they might have had issues before. Um, so those, those eight positions are intended to remove folks from the waitlist and provide opportunity for additional youth to be served. Uh, with those additional eight positions, we can see upward to 120, 130 more kids at any given time, a critical need. Um, the, uh, the ICSs work with youth. I want to make sure the public is aware of this. These are kids with severe and emotional disorders, so these are youth that have issues staying stabilized and emotionally regulated in their home environment, their school environment, and within the community. So if we provide services to these youths early on, they more than likely will have successful adult, um, uh, life experiences and not continue to navigate, um, and struggle as if, if, as they would have had they not received services. So specific, um, focus, like I said, will be community-based services, um, uh, so that any, any provider, any family who needs services for these more complex kids can get it. I do want to speak for a moment because I know it's a passion of yours. Chairman Beatty is the kids in foster care. Um, we, we have, we actually fast-track kids in by, and in foster care. We have special arrangements with the Foster Care Agency that those folks get screened. They're offered an appointment within 24 hours, and then we fast-track them into services because of all the trauma and movement in their lives, so we want to stabilize those as quick as possible. So in addition to those eight integrated care specialists, the ASK is also for two. We named them admin two, um, support positions. They're really like case manager ones. These can provide some administrative support, um, some care coordination, helping people access other resources in the community, and help with some of our state and federal requirements with regard to paperwork and contract compliance, um, but it takes some of that administrative burden off of our direct care workers so they can do the more in-face and in-person services that these youth need. And, um, then we also, um, have added two additional team supervisors to that ASK. I think it's, it's important, again, to emphasize that our supervisors have direct service provider teams to the size of eight to 10. Each one of these providers has, um, 10 to 15 to 20 kids, which means that not only is that supervisor, um, reviewing treatment plans, signing off on progress notes, doing field mentoring and training, trying to be there, administrative for these people, for these staff, but they're clinically responsible for those 150 kids on, that are being seen by those providers they're supervising. So it's not very manageable for our workforce supervisors presently, and so we're trying to make sure we get to a more reasonable space with regard to the number of staff they can supervise and supervise well. Our goal is to make sure that if we can get people trained and confident in their role, and they might want to stick with us. Right now, we have, um, over 50% of our integrated care specialists have been with us less than 24 months. Our goal, by adding resources, is to keep a large number of them beyond two years, um, because retention and consistency for these youth is really important. So bottom line is, the ASK is related to service provision, um, getting the opportunity to see between 120 and 150 more kids at any given time. So the ASK also includes one integrated care specialist, three, this is a specialist position, um, with the intent to provide specialized supported employment services, um, to adults in our adult rehab program. So currently, we have a waitlist, um, and I don't know about you, but most people have, um, value having meaningful and purposeful work to go to every day, and it's pretty much how adults define themselves. What's the first thing people ask when they meet you? What do you do for a living? Our folks with severe and persistent mental illnesses haven't had a lot of success with work, and the employment supports are intended to help them garner the confidence and skills to go out and apply for jobs and get jobs and hopefully retain those jobs, um, and/or to pursue, um, their GED or graduate, not graduate, but, you know, the, um, college education, um, so that they too can have meaning and purpose in their life. We do know that, um, historically, folks that get these employment supports nationally, um, tend to stay out of the hospital and/or, um, uh, the state hospital or the local hospitals, and they have less interactions with law enforcement, because why? They have value in their day. They're doing something that's productive and meaningful, and they're not sitting home isolating, which is, is, is a really, um, negative consequence for folks that have a severe, uh, a severe persistent mental illness. And finally, uh, with a significant increase in positions since becoming a CCBHC, we have also asked for an additional IT support position. This is a position that builds computers, works heat tickets, um, does all the technology supports to program staff so they can continue to focus on client care. So those are the drivers, those are the positions that are being asked for. We did define those based on strategic initiatives of expanding 988 capacity and required CCBHC services, um, so it's paramount to our ongoing success and, um, availability to people in our community. But I wanted to switch gears for just a moment and talk about, um, and highlight a few of our achievements because we don't celebrate enough. Calm Care, we just keep working, trying to serve the public, and, and I want to make sure that we also take care of ourselves by recognizing the hard work that our workforce is doing every day. Since becoming a CCBHC, I just, oh, let me backtrack, I just want to remind everybody in the room, and for those that might be listening, CCBHC is a funding model for Medicaid, so it changes the way in which we get, which, which, which we get reimbursed. In exchange for that, we have enhanced service offerings to the community. So since we implemented in 2022, we've, um, uh, we've implemented four evidence-based practices in our meeting fidelity. Um, those evidence-based practices are medication-assisted treatment, and that is, uh, for persons with an opioid disorder who need medication to curb the cravings so that they can, um, have a fulfilling life. We've also added a cert of community treatment, uh, which is an evidence-based practice designed to har- uh, help those that are hard to treat and who often have significant hospitalization histories but also intersects with law enforcement. Um, it's a team-based approach, and their wrapped, or sports are wrapped around them to maximize the opportunity for success. Uh, I just spoke to supported employment because we're asking for an added position. This is, again, we provide job supports and job coaching and, um, mentoring around, um, employment and/or, uh, pursuing further education. Um, and then the other evidence-based practice is cognitive behavioral therapy. While we were doing some of that before, all staff are now trained, um, in cognitive behavioral therapy and motivational interviewing so that they can more effectively engage patients in defining meaningful goals and objectives for treatment, um, and that we have, um, goals and outcomes that we could track to celebrate with our patients as they achieve success. Um, one success story I just wanted to share with regard to supported, um, employment. Um, a patient was referred to support employment in July of 2023 with very little work history. She'd been living with her guardian and wanted to explore independence, which included getting a job and her own apartment. Those would be firsts for this individual. She's not a verbal person and is genuinely, generally very quiet. Quiet makes it sometimes difficult to out and advocate for yourself to get a job or ask for supports. Through, uh, career exploration with the patient and job searching to find what she was most interested in, the patient started a job in February as a housekeeper and continues to hold that job three days a week. She's also moved into her own apartment and has not been hospitalized, so give a little support to somebody in a new way, and they can achieve amazing things. I, I, to me, you know, that's a life saved, a life with meaning, very important. So another area of strength is access to, timely access to services. In the first half of this year, Calm Care completed- In the first half of this year, Calm Care completed 1,722 intakes across our child, adult, and addiction populations. Timely access as defined by CCBHC was achieved over 95% of the time. And I think the reason I bring that up is if you compare us to where we were at the beginning of 2022, before we became a certified community behavioral health clinic, it was below 60. Big jump and a remarkable achievement. And then mobile crisis response is a required CCBH service. We too have made considerable strides in this area by not only expanding the number of teams but in our response time as well. On average, response time in 2023 was just over seven hours. Today and all of this year and most of last year, we were at under 30 minutes, and response time being the time somebody calls in and asks to the time in which we dispatch to respond. Pretty, pretty significant. Couldn't have been achieved without the work and huge lift by our staff. So I want to make sure that as we're talking about our successes, that I do a shout-out to our workforce because it takes every single one of them. I mean, we frequently say, you know, we hear it everywhere, is it takes a village? It really does take a village. This is hard work. It's tiring work. It's exhausting work. And without team work and good leadership from supervisors for training and support, we couldn't achieve these outcomes. So we're committed to continuing to drive this initiative forward. And I just want to conclude with just saying that, you know, there's been a pent-up need for behavioral health services in our community for years. We don't know what that pent-up need looks like today, so I want to make sure that I articulate that I'm coming to you today with strategic needs as we need them today, but the likelihood of coming back at some point in the future as we continue to scale up is highly probable, and I don't want that to be a surprise because I think, you know, we're on to some pretty incredible things, and I'm really excited to see where we can go. So with that, I briefed each of you on this topic already, so you're familiar with it, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good.
And Pete is laughing because I had a slip of words.
No.
No. Communicating with manager.
Oh.
So we're all good.
Thank you, Joan.
Thanks, Joan, for explaining all these positions. And I know it did, it caught our eye originally, but the justification you're explaining pretty well.
Yeah. Joan, thanks for the presentation. We'll have some questions and comments. I'll make a couple of statements quickly before we lead into questions and comments. And you have been very open in your staff and the manager's office, and Lindsay also helping us to understand this. I care very deeply about the work that you do and your staff does, and I think you do great work in this community. And I certainly want to be supportive of these positions because I do understand, particularly with 988, this comes with no surprise. We knew this was coming. We knew we had to scale on this because of the chat text features. I wanted to understand what your needs are in children's and what the current service level is now, and if the need is being met and what this would do. I think you've helped with that. I might have a few more questions. The biggest issue here is 21 new positions is big, and we are in a position where we are looking to find as many, not even just cuts, but efficiencies, or just trying to work as efficiently as possible. Are any of these positions property tax-funded? Are these revenue funds? What? Can you help me understand where this money is going to come from to pay for this scale?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up because in my haste to not be too long-winded, I left that critical component out of my information. Calm Care is not asking for general tax fund dollars that every other department is competing for. We're intending to reinvest revenue from the services we deliver into these positions, so it would be revenue fund.
Revenue fund, not property tax-funded?
Yep.
Okay. You know, the things that we do in government, we need to do well. Our core services, we need to make sure we're doing these things well. So can you help me understand again, the children's piece of it? I'm there on the 988 piece. We expect this. I expected this and expected it was coming. Help me understand the children's piece. You had said 120 to 150 more kids being served. Is that, what's that metric barometer? Is that monthly, annually? What are we looking?
At any given time.
Any given time.
So if you have eight new integrated care specialists, they have the capacity to serve that many more kids. Yeah.
Are we not able to meet the need for the children's?
No.
Okay.
No, you know, we get, I mean, these are special high-needs youth. They need the wraparound supports. It's our niche and our strength area, and right now, I'm looking at Chantel right behind you, but you know, we get 25 referrals for intakes a week. We're only maintaining the kids that seriously need our services. Otherwise, we're referring out for therapy into the community. But these are kids that need those wraparound supports. We do have a waitlist presently. We're serving them minimally but not to the need and the level they require. Again, we want to provide the right level of care at the right time because then you are making progress. The more people we can have successfully move through services and exit the back door, the more people we can bring into the front door. But right now, we have a waitlist.
Okay. Two questions, two more, and then we'll see who else has some questions or comments. What's the current staffing level for Calm Care? Before you answer that, I want to publicly acknowledge that there was one point in time when I was running for this seat in my campaign, I knew that you were 200-plus full-time employees down. So I know there's been significant progress. Where are we at today?
You say that, and it triggers all of our anxiety and our fatigue. We are at, I can't tell you the exact number, but we were at like 466 last week, and we brought more staff on this week, so you know that.
Above 90% now staffing?
I think we're probably close to 87% right now.
Very good. Congratulations on that. Last question. The IT piece of this. I know Mike Elpers is not with us today.
He's behind you.
Oh, is Mike here? I didn't know Mike was, oh, sorry, Mike. I should have felt his presence. In my mind, and I never want to tell, you're the expert in this space, right? I mean, our job, I believe, is to get the resources where they need to be and to be the steward of the taxpayer dollars and represent the constituents in this community. But in my mind, trying to consolidate what we do in IT into Mike's department, and then that makes sense to me from a business standpoint. Can you help make that case of why you would need your own IT person here instead of letting Mike and maybe add someone to help with this or specialize in this or?
You know, we've done it, we've done it both ways over time, and you know, the last director pushed them back to our department because the work we do is a little bit more unique in that, you know, we have an electronic health record these folks help us support, which, you know, I think I've shared with you during briefings, is a beast. It takes a lot to keep that going and a lot to keep staff trained and functional on that. I can't speak for Mike, but we work hard to stay in communication with him and be a good team player. So I'm hoping he sees us as an extension of his workforce, even though they report under a different system. I, quite frankly, I don't care how it works, as long as it works, and it's working right now. So I think the logic is, why break what isn't broken?
Okay. Manager Stoltz?
Just to that and Chairman, we've had a lot of staff discussion about not just IT but finance and HR. We're an organization of 45-plus departments and elected offices, and we talk about centralization and control of these three main functions, IT, finance, and human resource. We are still in discussion, I think is fair to say Joan needs this position. We need this IT support for this particular component. Whether that stays working in the Calm Care arena or works for Elpers with a dotted line going to Calm Care, we'll figure out into the future. But that is, it's an interesting topic. There's a global discussion going on about that.
Okay, work's being done. Okay, I'll pause. Commissioner Lopez.
Well, that was really, my question was just kind of globally, what are we doing with some of these positions that are IT positions but not necessarily reporting to Mike? I think just with where we're at with technology and security, it just makes a lot of sense to me to have them all at least report to Mike. So I agree you need this position, but I would like to see us figure that out, not just with this, but with all of them that aren't right now reporting to Mike.
Commissioner Howe?
Wanted to ask a couple of clarification questions. Thank you for the presentation, and I'm generally supportive. I just wanted to look at the history of this a little bit. You mentioned our CCBHC rates went up in 2022. Is that right?
We went from a fee-for-service model for most of our services to a daily encounter rate. So if somebody was seen once or seen 15 times in a day, we get a daily rate. So it was just a different mechanism of funding, but it did increase our revenues.
So the backup material says that there is revenues currently in the 2024 budget to support the hiring of these folks, I guess, immediately.
Correct.
But going forward, you mentioned this is a revenue fund, meaning that we're going to be charging, I guess, insurance or self-pay or how, there's going to be enough money coming in as we provide these services to essentially continue providing these services. So this will not end up being a property tax.
It should, it should never do that, yeah.
That covers the salary? Does it cover other aspects like benefits and workspace and things like that?
Yeah, it covers everything related to employment of an individual. So it's the salary, it's the benefits, it's the computers that we have to buy for those workforce, it's mileage to deliver care, it's professional development funds, it's everything tied to that individual.
Why didn't we not do this three or four years ago?
Why did we not do it three or four?
Again, if this is self-funded, why did we not do this?
We wouldn't have been able to support them through our revenue fund three years ago.
I guess I want to make a point that, again, we talked about the deficiency of staff.
Yeah.
Things have changed.
Yes, significantly.
And we have to note that because there are people out there arguing how bad the county commission was because we didn't provide funding or didn't support staff. Things have changed.
Yes.
And they've changed to provide some new opportunities.
Wonderful.
That must be recognized in this discussion because otherwise, it's just simply revisionist history. It talks about how bad the county commission was prior. We did the best we could, trying to keep our mill levy as low as possible and provide the best services we possibly could. And let me look back at that time. There was a time where we actually had, I think, unfilled positions that were eliminated from the staffing table.
Yes.
Because they had not been filled in a very, very long time.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
And so it was just simply cleaning up the staffing table based on what had been going on for, I don't know how long, but a very long time.
Many, many years.
Many years, even before I got here. So the end of the day, this is, we're providing more services. There's different revenue sources today that weren't available back then.
Correct.
But rather than look backwards and say how bad everybody was, manager, commissioners, everybody, that's revisionist history. The reality is, we did the best we could with what we had, and we were essentially meeting the expected needs of our community. We're doing things better today because there's new revenue streams available. Understand, though, this is not free money. This money comes from somewhere. It's coming from insurance or it's coming from self-pay. There is money being poured into this for these necessary services, and there is an economic impact when this type of money is used this way. It can't be used other ways. It is potentially causing increases in the cost of insurance, for example. There is other, there are other impacts to the economy even through this. Again, I support this. But just the idea that this is free money and there's no consequences anywhere else in the community or in the state of Kansas or to the people we serve because this is free money is really not really a full understanding of exactly what's going on here.
Yeah, I don't think.
So I want to be really fair.
Yeah.
There are people today that are talking about how we've essentially changed the world because we're better today than we were before, understanding that what we had before was assumed to be horrible because we had bad people running the county. I think that's unfair. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's ever said it was free money, so I just want to clarify that. I hear what you're saying, and I understand the intent for the message, but at least internally, we've never said it's free money.
And to some degree, the state of Kansas stood up on this too, correct? How much did the state of Kansas?
Yeah, the estimate is they're investing $80 million in community behavioral health clinics, yep.
So that point, Commissioner, does not free money. There is a tax component to this, it's just not local tax.
And I think, you know, it's really important, you know, you bring that up, and the state just got demonstration status with the feds, which means that there's more federal pass-through than state general tax coming out of it too. So Lindsay stepping forward to speak.
Yeah. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Lindsay Purso, your CFO. So to speak to that, to the history, this is a state-funded service, right? And if you all recall where we were during the pandemic, because of the way the system was set up, because of the way billing was done, we literally were within $1,000 of not being able to fund a $60 million budget. We had to go out and actively seek provider relief funding from the feds in order to keep Calm Care services solvent. So it is not free money, but this is also a much fairer, more balanced way of collecting revenue and a way to guarantee that this type of service can continue.
I will remind the room, there was a year we were offered, if you will, revenues from vending lottery ticket sales, from vending machines. Remember the year that happened? In other words, rather than the state appropriating money to Sedgwick County?
Right.
We were the, I don't want to use a bad word here, but we were not treated equally with other parts of the state. We had greater needs because of our urban footprint, if you will, but that wasn't recognized by the state of Kansas. We were not given appropriations that we had had in the past that were, they were taken out of the budget because they were trying to find a way to balance a budget. And they actually offered to us, if you will, revenues from lottery sales, lottery ticket sales out of vending machines to solve the Sedgwick County problem. That was how ridiculous this got.
Yeah, that lottery vending dollars went to crisis centers, and we benefited from that, yep. But that was a crazy way to do it, but that was the.
But today, they are essentially recognizing our great need here, and they are appropriating funds as they should. So to their credit, they have come to the table, they're doing a better job, and we're doing a better job.
Yep.
But this is, again, so the history of this is to look back and say, was Sedgwick County wrong or were we bad? No, we did the best we could.
Right.
With what we had. And we could have raised the mill levy and funded this through property taxes. We did the best we could trying to keep our taxes low and had the best staff we possibly could. And by the way, it's one of those types of services that if I offered you another 100 people, you would take them because there's almost, there's almost never really enough. And so we have to pick a number that says, we think we can do a pretty good job with this number. Could we use more? Sure, you can. There's really not like a perfect amount. Could we do this with less people? Maybe not as good of a job, but we would live with that if we absolutely had to. The reality is, back in the day, we did the best we could with what we had. And that's the point I'm trying to make is, we have to balance services against the other side of that coin is the tax burden. And this became a very local issue because the state basically turned their back to Sedgwick County. So today, we have a much better situation because they've actually recognized the great needs of Sedgwick County. And so things have gotten better here, mostly because of the state legislature has stepped up to the plate. And so we're solving problems here, but let's not, let's not claim that any one person here solved this problem because that's just not true.
No, that was.
I do appreciate what you're doing, though. You are, you are a great leader in this area. I just wanted to say that if any one person, the manager, any one commissioner says we did something to solve this problem, it's really not reflective of the true history.
It's taken a village, that, back to that quote from earlier, it's taken everybody's efforts for sure. Thank you.
Joan, thank you. I would note, too, looking at the 2025 budget, about $65 million budget for Calm Care, only 5.6 million comes from the property tax general fund. So I think that's a lot of, people don't fully understand that it's a big budget with a lot of things happening, but only $5.6 million of that budget is from our general fund, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the other piece with regard to the general fund is a lot of that is targeted toward the jail diversion initiatives, so yeah.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, any other questions for Joan? Okay, thank you.
And just let me offer each of you a happy boss's day, since you're the boss for all of us. Thank you.
Yes. Good to know. Okay, thank you. I will, let's move forward on item I here. I'll move to approve item I of the consent agenda. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share? Okay, next item.
Other.
Anything under other?
I have one thing.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to point out that next week, I will be attending the NBAA, National Business Aviation Association Conference. So I will, I will be absent in real life, but on, I know Wednesday, we have a couple of agenda items, and I will zoom in. But I do have some meetings out there as well, so kind of be in and out, but the ones that are important, I will be zooming in to weigh in on a couple items and possibly could weigh in Tuesday. Do we have a staff meeting Tuesday? No?
Do, yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, bottom line is, I'll be remote and I will be missing parts and attending parts, so thank you.
Very good. Good luck there, enjoy. Other, anything else under other? I would note that Wichita Chamber of Commerce has coordinated a meeting, a city-to-city trip, they're going to Phoenix. They left. They left today, and they're there, and I think they come back Friday evening. The reason Phoenix was, they wanted to look at how, Phoenix has, one of the many reasons, was how Phoenix is managing their medical corridor with what's happening here with BioMed Campus and some of those things. No commissioners are going on that trip, but we did send someone from finance to go on that trip. And the reason we did in conversation was we wanted them to ask questions, some specific questions, and really look at these relationships in regards, so what's happening in the BioMed corridor down there? But also, how can Calm Care crisis and what are their crisis services, if they have any, how does it interrelate with some of those things? So I appreciate the opportunity that finance gave us to send someone down to join that trip. I think it'll be very, very, I talked, I had a chance to visit with her a little bit before she left on some specific questions and things. So I think it'll be very worthwhile. But wanted to know that there's a lot of people from this community, a lot of leaders in this, organizational leaders in the community that are on the city-to-city trip, and I think it'll be very fruitful for us, what they bring back. Anything else? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
No executive session today? With that being said, it is 10:15. I want to thank everybody for being flexible today and coming up here to the sixth floor while the construction is going on downstairs. We will be back in our regular chambers next Wednesday for the B OCC meeting, so. Outside of that, this meeting is officially adjourned.